Affirmative. Recording Secretary, Ms. Sue Summers.
Yes.
Business Manager, Mr. Michael Cassidy. He'll be joining the regular session after executive session. Our Title I Coordinator, Mrs. Rebecca Hyde. Rebecca, we couldn't hear that. Rebecca's here.
How about that?
Yes.
Okay.
Our Director of Facilities and Grounds, Mr. John Londa.
Yes.
And our Health and Safety Officer, Ms. Katie McGuire.
Yes.
All right, I will turn it back to you, Mrs. Bertrand.
Thank you. In accordance with the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and is being broadcast over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel and streaming on Facebook Live. And this meeting of the Lunenburg School Committee is being conducted remotely. The town of Lunenburg, in response to the COVID-19 coronavirus, is currently following the guidance from the Lunenburg Board of Health, Massachusetts Department of Public Health, and the CDC regarding the virus and steps communities can take to prevent the spread. And all town facilities are currently closed to the public. In accordance with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GL 30A Section 20, all public meetings are being conducted remotely. The order, which you can find posted on the town website on the COVID Information Center page, accessed through the town manager's webpage, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the Lunenburg School Committee is convening by telephone conference, video conference, via Zoom app, Facebook Live, as posted on the town website, identifying how the public may join. For Zoom meetings, please note that this meeting is being recorded and some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Meeting business ground rules. We're now turning over to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. As the chair, I will go down the line of members inviting people to comment with questions, motions. Please hold off until your name is called and remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. Also, please remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate meeting minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yells the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members of the committee wish to engage in colloquy with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. For items with public comment, after members have spoken, the chair will afford public comment as follows. The chair will ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses, and they will be called on by name and afforded up to three minutes for any comments. And finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. So we are actually going to turn to executive session before, as the start to the meeting. We will be back briefly, in a brief amount of time. So at this moment, we will have roll call vote and exit the meeting for our executive session. This executive session is to conduct strategy and preparation for negotiations with union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with union personnel.
Great, roll call. Mrs. Shambo?
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Shapiro?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bertrand?
Yes.
So members, the link was in our email earlier.
Liz, you're now the host.
Okay, thanks.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for your patience. All right, we are going to move on to the first item on our agenda, which is the chair's report, and I do not have a report this evening, so we'll be moving directly to public comment for agenda items. Just checking to see if we've got any public comment. And I'm not seeing any. So I will move on then to reviewing and approving meeting minutes from October 7th meeting. Ms. Arshambau?
I have a question. It wasn't in my packet.
Yeah, I didn't have it either.
Then we can, oh, Dr. Burnham, you are muted.
They did not make it into the packet.
Then we will, we will move on to superintendent's report.
All righty, so this evening I have a little bit of a staffing update. All positions in the custodial maintenance and grounds department are filled. We're still looking for custodial substitutes. We are anticipating some staff absence. We are still accepting applications for the student custodian positions. We will post the open para-professional positions currently unfilled in the FY '21 budget. We will be using them as floating support as well as having them ready to fill in as teacher substitutes. And therefore, we will be passing over item D on our agenda under new business this evening. We feel that filling these positions at this time will, will meet our need. Professional development yesterday, our staff joined the North Middlesex staff for a virtual conference. The keynote address, "Teaching in a Time of Uncertainty: The Emotional Skills Our Kids Need and the Patterns to Target" was provided by Lynn Lyons, a clinical psychologist. and the Patterns to Target was provided by Lynn Lyons, a clinical psychologist. The session focused on how rates of anxiety and depression among children and teens were on the rise before the pandemic, and now increased isolation, uncertainty, and other family stresses make addressing the social and emotional needs of students and families even more critical. There was discussion on how to best communicate with families and students around challenges, change, and uncertainty. And the, the presentation was designed to provide some concrete steps to both interrupt the most common patterns that increase anxiety and depression and develop the skills needed to promote resilience, flexibility, and connection. The, the conference overall went extremely well, and we've got some good feedback. Live streaming as an update. We are still engaging with the teachers' union around live streaming. We've identified the, the technology needs that they feel need to be met in order for them to be successful with that live streaming model. So hopefully, I'll have an update for you at the next meeting as to where we are with that. Winter sports, no decision yet as to whether or not there will be a winter season. We're expecting information on that in the coming week or so. And lastly, a reminder for families that next Tuesday is an early release day for Turkey Hill and Primary. The parent-teacher conferences will be held next Tuesday. And also for all students and families, next Wednesday is Veterans Day, and all of the schools will be closed. That's all I have for you this evening.
Thank you. Then we have our Student Representative Report next. And we have our Student Representative, Dylan with us.
Hi, Dylan. Hello. So to start off my report, the week of October 19th was the LHS Spirit Week led by the Student Council. We had really good turnout for both virtual and in-person students. Virtual students were able to utilize the hashtag #LBGSpirit in order to post pictures of them in their outfits. And at the end, we did a survey to see how it went and what people thought. And the one major piece of feedback we got was that we held one of the dress-up days on Picture Day, and we would have gotten less, more participation, excuse me, if we hadn't held that on Picture Day. Excuse me. Secondly, we Picture Day was, of course, that week, and it was held outside. That went really well. There is a new parking, or excuse me. There's a new pickup procedure at LHS utilizing the high school lot to cut down on the amount of cars left on Mass Ave during the pickup time. SUCO is holding, is starting a process of finding a COVID-friendly event for students. And with our new members, we're engaging them in that. And we have some great ideas coming up for nice, friendly, COVID-safe events. And National Honor Society is hosting peer tutoring, starting, I believe it's already started, for both middle and high school students. And that is my report. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, then we will move on to New Business. Title I Literacy Report, Elementary Literacy Report.
So this evening Rebecca Hyde has joined us. She's our Title I Coordinator this year. And I asked her to come in and give you an update as to how Title I and elementary literacy are shaping up already this year. So I'll turn it over to Rebecca. Rebecca, you should have the capacity to screen share.
I think I do. Let's see. Although I have the capacity, let's see if I have the talents.
I think you need to hit present mode, which is next to the share.
There we go. Yep, thank you. All righty. Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity to provide an update around Title I support and a bit about primary and elementary literacy as well. Here. So just to kind of orient ourselves, many of you already are familiar with Title I over the years. It is part of Federal Elementary and Secondary Act. So funds are channeled in from the federal government into the state that's passed to the district, and then the district makes decisions on how funding is allocated. In here in Ludenberg, funding is prioritized towards primary and elementary school, focusing on our youngest students and providing that basis of intervention early. There are four priorities in Title I funding and services, and you can see that they're around providing support to lowest-achieving students, providing evidence-based programs that enable students to participate in high-quality activities and improve achievement, elevate instruction through professional learning opportunities, and a big component is involving parents and guardians in participating in decision-making, the activities, professional learning, training, and lots of feedback. So those are, I think I've got my little that's so you can see. So that's the core principles and priorities of Title I. And over on this right side here, just a kind of a little bit of a three-year history of the funding that comes with Title I. And you can see allocations from FY 18, 19 through 2021. And those allocations are based on a census of students, families that fall into low-income categories, and that's how the funding is allocated. But once the funding then comes into the district, we then look towards who are the students that are not achieving at the levels that meet grade-level expectations, and that's how we then further allocate and target the funds. But you can see that there is definitely a trajectory that's, that's facing kind of not in the right direction. But perhaps that, that could change, as you know, it comes from the federal government. So what's going on now could, could make a difference. So one of the first steps in understanding more about Title I services, especially as I entered this district in July, was to look towards families. And each year, as part of family engagement, there is an end-of-year Title I survey. And that survey is really important, and it was very important to me to understand the history, but also to understand like what's important to the families in Ludenberg, and how should we prioritize our planning for the year coming forward? So that survey will happen again this year. What, we're fortunate this year, just as part of how we're having to operate, and there is a little bit of a silver lining. There will be additional surveys that are coming from the district about the different models. And those surveys have also helped inform Title I planning. One example was families, especially of our students, were asking for concrete experiences, experiences with manipulatives in addition to digital activities. So that was, that was helpful feedback, and we're going to continue to be looking at the parent and family surveys with the lens of Title I throughout the year as well, not just at the end of the year. Also, we're looking to increase opportunities for families to learn about Title I services. So this year, we provided a narrative presentation that was made available at Open House at the primary as well as the elementary school, and it's also posted on school websites to view on demand. So kind of taking a page out of the book of our, our learners, some synchronous and asynchronous opportunities for folks to learn more around Title I. There'll be some information actually tomorrow at the PACCEL meeting for families. That's another opportunity to engage with families around what's available in Title I services and to hear from them as well about their needs. The reading specialist at the primary school has been meeting with families on Google Meets to support communication and technology needs. So it's kind of a whole holistic approach, especially with the little ones, if they're receiving some of their services virtually, to support the families as well in helping the students access technology and also to learn a bit about ways to support students at home as parents are interested and can around reading services. Some things in progress. Working with the Director of Teaching and Learning, these are some of our aspirational goals. I think we'll, we'll meet many of them, if not all. What we'd like to improve resources that are available to families and curate and organize them in a way that are very clear so that families kind of know which ones are like good housekeeping, sale of approval resources that can be helpful in different areas and make sure that they're labeled clearly for them for their uses and refresh those frequently. We're looking to plan some family literacy activities in winter and spring sessions, and we'll really be thinking those in terms of safety restrictions, but there's probably opportunities there as well to just reimagine how we can provide a couple of activities, especially in the coldness of winter and the burgeoning of spring before kids are, are out and about as much. We're going to continue to review and respond to family survey information. And I know it's only November, but we'll begin to think about, you know, summer reading engagement and what, how can we keep literacy and reading as part of the engagement over the summer, although there's outdoor stuff that kids want to be doing? But how can reading continue to be part of that life as well? So in this year especially, a bit more of a challenge in one of the expectations around determining the use of Title I funding and supporting students, and that's around assessments. We did not have summative assessments, our state summit of assessment, and as the year closed last year, it didn't close as we typically would. So this year, more than any year, I think, was important for us to really look at how are we going to know how our kids are doing? What, how are they coming in? What are their immediate strengths? What are their immediate needs so that we can start to build the supports that would be most targeted and match those needs right away? We also heard from teachers over the summer, and this was carried forward historically to me as well, that they were looking for assessments that could provide actionable data. So as part of the Title I identification process, we need to have a couple of data sources that help us to determine who are the students that are at risk? Who are the students that we're concerned are not quite where they need to be as far as meeting grade-level expectations? So this year, we brought forward, again, from the interest of teachers, iReady as a screener and a diagnostic. And we're using the iReady system in both ELA and Math to identify students that are at risk or, you know, are just below where we would want them to be so that we can provide additional supports. iReady is one of the screeners that has been identified and promoted by the Department of Education as well. So we were careful to look and see which screeners they were supporting and made sure that we considered all of those in our selection. And the teachers were right. That was one of the, one of the choices. We're also continuing with the developmental reading inventory. And, you know, why? That is a little bit of a, it's a different kind of modality. iReady screener is online. We have, for the most part, been able to provide the opportunity for students to take that assessment with their teachers in school. Our remote students, we've been making some adjustments, having the teacher keep the meat on so that she can still see the student's progress and is, or he can be talking with the students, answering questions as needed. The developmental reading inventory, though, is one-to-one, and it really is, especially this year, important to build those relationships and get to know kids as readers. So we've used these data points along with certainly teacher recommendations of concerns that they have evidence around, as well as considering if a student was receiving Title I services in the past, because we want to make sure that we have a continuation of services and not in a abrupt halt. We want to make sure that students transition and feel supported as they transition out of some additional services into the classroom more independently. Those were all of the factors that we considered. And kind of a drum roll, so here's our, just a little bit of the beginning of the year data that iReady provides us. And I am a bit of a data geek, so I will try to control my enthusiasm about delving through reports and data. But what iReady does is it, at the beginning of the year, it, it really gives you a sense of, you know, where are our kids coming in? Where are the kids that, you know what, tier-one instruction? They should be okay. They should be able to access it, and that's where they, they should start and do their work right there. Students that fall in the yellow, as you can see over here in this part of the triangle, are students that are just below grade level, and they're definitely folks that, you know, we want to make sure have extra small group instruction in the classroom and perhaps might also receive some additional support through Title I. And then we have our students here in the red, and those are students that are most at risk, and those are students that we definitely want to make sure have some sort of additional supports, whether it's Title I, whether it's through specialized reading, through individual education plans, but definitely want to make sure we're responding to the needs of those students. Good news is, and I, I think I may have said this to Dr. Burnham, I know I've said this to the principals, I've worked in some very large settings, and I've never seen so much green. So that's, that's a great, great thing to see. However, there are some areas of yellow that we need to take a closer look at in terms of resources and programming. And I'll talk a little bit more about that as we move through. But this measure gives us a sense of where students are in terms of strengths. Like, there are many students that we also need to provide opportunities to stretch them as well and areas of need, but it also helps us to plan whole-group instruction as well as small group. So we're using it for a variety of reasons. So this is a primary and Turkey Hill together in reading. And then this is what we also learned in math. And I think this, this will also help us take a look at the programming that we're offering in Tier One and make sure that the programming that we have, we're using it in a way that is recommended and that if there are gaps that we're thinking about, what else do we need to do to make sure that the teachers have everything that they need to fill those gaps? Okay, so from the diagnostic report, and this is going to focus more on reading at this point. iReady, we identified that students that were at risk, so we saw percentages before, and these are into numbers. At the primary school across grades one and two, there were 23 students that, you know, they were in the red, they were at risk. And then in, at Turkey Hill, focusing on grades three and four first, there were about 32 students. So we want to make sure that we can provide Title I services for those students if they're not already, already receiving specialized reading instruction through special education. And then we also want to reach into the students that fell into that yellow area that we're just below. So what we've been able to do, and I can explain that a little bit more, by leveraging human resources, we're actually able, for this first round of Title I services, to provide support to 33 students in grade one, 27 in grade two, 23 in grade three, and 20 in grade four. And I did also want to acknowledge that at Turkey Hill Elementary School, we have a Wilson reading teacher. That is outside of Title I funding, but that teacher also provides specialized reading instruction as well to some more students. So kind of taking that number before, that allocation number that we, we showed early on. And although the funding has decreased, we're still doing a robust job in using that In using that funding. In a, in a way that is continuing to meet the needs of students. It's taken some ingenuity this year, some. Definitely folks taking on as many groups as possible and really being thoughtful in how their day is planned, is planned out. You'll notice that kindergarten, we're going to start kindergarten in January. And that's exciting to get to the students there. How we're going to do it? Some of our students, we're hoping that by providing services. To the students that are just below, just in the yellow, we're going to give them that boost so that they'll be ready to. Tackle all of the expectations of their grade level and that will provide some more time openings to support students in kindergarten. Grade five is a discussion in progress. And I'm looking at my schedule to provide some support in grade five and I actually have. A principal that is just so interested in literacy and she also may tackle a group as well. So it's like an all hands on deck time. One other piece that I didn't talk about in terms of math and also in ELA. We've also leveraged personalized learning platforms. I think that's, that'll be on the next slide. Let me just check. It'll be coming up, but I'll talk a little bit now. Personalized learning platforms of Lexia, iReady and iXL that are self-adjusting and. Adjust, they ask, each program asks students a number of questions and the more questions you get right. The questions will become more rigorous, the questions that you get wrong, then the questions will become a bit easier. Until the program finds exactly where you should be. And that gives us not only an assessment score, but it also provides. Individualized, personalized, I guess I should say, personalized learning programs and paths that the students will work on. And those are also evidence-based programs that have some. Quantitative studies that back up their effectiveness. Lexia has been in the district for a bit of time. I think we're going to be very mindful in checking on the data. And intervening if students get stuck more than maybe we may have in the past and really. Use every feature that we can in these personalized learning platforms, especially during this time of hybrid learning. The companies that provide these programs have also been producing quite a bit of resources. So each one of these programs also comes with. A whole host of lesson plans, activities, both like, you know, your traditional activities that I had in school. More paper pencil or matching and sorting to some online, being able to like drag and drop. Circle, doing some things with online tools, which we know that that's part of our world now and kids need to know how to do that. So we're maximizing all of the resources that come with those online platforms as well. So that kind of got us a little bit into, as part of Title One, we not only need to think about engaging parents, meeting, taking their feedback, meeting their needs. Considering the funding that we have, considering the assessments for kids, and we also have to think about, so, so what are we teaching? In the groups that we have and how we're putting kids together. So I did want to just touch on, I'm sure you're all familiar with the Massachusetts State Frameworks and they really. Are our guide as to what we're teaching and we, you know, seek out programs and practices that help us meet those standards. And in literacy, the focus areas are reading literature, reading information, writing. In argument, informational and narrative, speaking and listening and foundational reading. And this year, and actually for the past couple of years, but I think this year even more, there's a lot of. Information coming forward about the importance of foundational reading. I think for many of us that have been reading specialists or literacy specialists and classroom teachers, it's not necessarily new news to us. We know that students need to have strong foundations in phonemic awareness and phonics. So it's good to see that a spotlight's being. Being put on, on that area that maybe in some places hasn't been so. Two opportunities are coming forward. One actually was just released by the Department of Education. And they're going to be relooking at literacy and they have a guide, the Mass Literacy Guide. It was actually just introduced this week. To their website and we just got notification that we can start to take a look at it. And as part of the support in moving our understanding of the Massachusetts Literacy Guide forward. There is an elementary literacy leaders network. So the Director of Teaching and Learning, Annika Scott, myself and our reading specialist Claire Peters. We will all attend that network and bring forward the learning from that network to our. Into our own practice, of course, but also in supporting teachers. And thinking about, so what is the, the learning that we're, we're bringing back? What does that mean to? Lunenburg, what does it mean in terms of our data? What does it mean in terms of the needs of the children in front of us? And what does it mean in terms of the programming we currently have? And is there programming we may need to fill in some pieces? When we start talking about resources and programs, that is part of the work that we need to consider. But we also need to consider the practices and you may be hearing about evidence-based resources, evidence-based practices. And that does come from federal, federal law that is encouraging. Schools and districts to look towards the evidence base as they're making decisions around practices and programs. So one place that I did want to just call out that I've been using over the past couple of years at least. Is the What Works Clearinghouse. And this is a place, a database that collects. Quantitative research studies in education and has a kind of a rubric or criteria. And rates the results as statistically significant. In a range from showing no evidence to minimal evidence to moderate evidence to strong evidence. This is a practice guide, so they not only look at programs, but they also look at practices. So these practice guides are something that we will be looking at with our teachers over the course of this year. And probably beyond that. Because programs are one piece of the work, but practices, what we do with those programs. Or what we do with whatever resources are in front of us are as important. So this is. In the slide deck and there's also a link. But this is an example of a practice guide that can definitely help inform Title One instruction as well as classroom instruction. And they have, that was on foundational skills. This is around comprehension in kindergarten through third grade. And again, there is an evidence base, but sometimes the things that, you know, we may have done in the past or we think. Are going to be a really robust practice, you know, it's good to go into the research and see. Were our perceptions validated by some evidence-based quantitative research that's out there? There are some areas in education that there's a good amount of quantitative research, but there are a lot of areas that most of the research is qualitative. And that does not, according to the federal government, fall within the guidelines of, that they're talking about for an evidence base. They're looking for a quantitative evidence base. So we look to both the evidence base, the quantitative studies, and we do know that the qualitative studies are important as well. And in some places, we just haven't gotten yet those quantitative studies to happen yet. So all of that that we just talked about, kind of like, you know, the, the funding that we have, the. Feedback from parents. The. Data that's available, the research that's available, all led into. Decisions about what kind of reading supports are being offered this year. You can see on this side as well, like we're really working on that alignment too with. The district plans along with the school plans, along to the actions that we're all choosing to take. Oops. So. Some of the reading supports, I talked a little bit about the personalized learning platforms and that is iReady. Lexia and iXL. So iReady is also a screener and a benchmark. But it also offers a personalized learning platform where students can have targeted instruction. Like every student has their own path, no two paths are likely the same. In iReady, reading for grades three to five, Lexia reading for grades K to two. K to two, want to stick with Lexia, it's been a program they've used for a long time. It is again, one of those programs that is recommended by the department. It is an evidence-based program, so that works very well. And then we are piloting iXL in, in the primary. And three to five is also using iXL and I think Annika would say iXL is being used all the way up the grades for mathematics. Reading supports, we're very fortunate to have a Wilson reading teacher this year at Turkey Hill. And she is providing specialized reading instruction for students that have that need as indicated on their individual education plan. We are providing small group reading instruction with groups no larger than four. Using evidence-based strategies and resources. And I said partially in progress because there are some places we want to shore up some of our resources. As coming in this year and not having a usual end to last year. It was difficult not to have. Yeah, perceptual data, which is important, what people think and their experiences is important, but it's always helpful to match those with some. Quantitative data. So now that we have quantitative data, just within the last few weeks, we're able to see, okay. These are some areas that we want to pay a little more attention to and make sure that we have the resources. Either we currently have them and we just need to use them in a way that meets. The needs of the students or we need to find some other resources and purchase other resources. We have some dedicated staff to focus on reading, myself, the Title One Coordinator and Literacy Specialist. The Title One Reading Teacher. We have two tutors that are working at Turkey Hill. And one is actually crossing into primary as well and they are. The, they're amazingly dedicated and working really hard and getting their groups up and running. They've done a tremendous amount of assessment. We do have a few hours that I have not yet been able to fill in those roles. So we are going to continue to look for a part-time tutor, especially as kindergarten comes on after the first of the year. We also have a paraprofessional at the primary school that is providing reading support as well. As part of using the personalized learning platforms and iReady assessment, we are able to frequently check in on data. Like real-time data as students are working through some of the games and the activities on these platforms. A data is being collected and we can stop just about at any time and see how students are doing. So that's been huge to have this dashboard available to us so that we can see how effective our instruction has been in matching the needs of kids. So part of my work is to kind of signal that, hey, we're going to stop and take a look and, you know, make the time to. Print off the data code and, or call it up and actually sit with teachers and say, let's take a look, what's going well? Where are the areas we're getting stuck? The students aren't progressing. What else can we do? And as I said before, those programs have some really great linked resources. So if we have a group of students, it will actually say to you, this group of students is, needs some additional support in high frequency words. And there's these little links to the side that have all the lessons that go with high frequency words. So that's, that's pretty amazing to have those there. But again, it's, it's new, so we want to make sure that teachers feel supported in accessing those throughout the year. We have in process, as I said before, identifying additional programming or practices for students with. Some of the reading challenges or perhaps learning disabilities that we're seeing in the data that we want to make sure we have the right match to mediate. We will continue some professional learning, as I said before, with the department. Annika, Claire and myself will attend that and bring the information forward. We just have to think about time. That's a real. Tough thing. Teachers are working very hard, so we'll have to figure out what makes sense to get that information to teachers in what way. And then there is still vertical teaming that's happening. Actually, we have our second vertical team meeting on Monday. And that team will work through this year in codifying the vision for literacy and aligning instructional resources and practices as needed. I did just want to also. Just, this is more like a little bit of a nod towards another, a school improvement plan goal that's in Turkey Hill School Improvement Plan. And that's really looking at the tiers of support. And I think you could probably hear the interest in the tiers of support just by the nature of Title One. But other things that we're, we're providing as well. So we're, we're looking at programs, we're looking at data, but we're really looking at a system of support. What's the system that we've put, that we're going to make sure is in place? What are the drivers? What does leadership look like to drive the system? What does implementation look like? What kind of competencies do teachers and educators at all levels need to have in order to make this system work? How are we sure that we're creating a system of equity? And then how are we using data to monitor the system that we've put in place? That's a big project, but it's just something I wanted to kind of put on the, on the table to let you know that it is definitely. The work that we're doing is contributing to it, but it is going to take more time to kind of build this out. And kind of give everybody the opportunity to develop a shared understanding and a shared language around a multi-tiered system of support. So almost done. I did want to. Also provide a little bit more information around literacy in general in the primary and elementary schools. And this is a very simple slide and probably familiar to many of you. Components of literacy instruction on the left side, components of phonemic awareness or phonological awareness, phonics, word study and grammar. And then those elements, we need to make sure that we're teaching them and we're teaching them directly, we're teaching them systematically. And then we're offering the opportunities for transfer and application in Read Aloud. And in this district, Reading Workshop and Writing Workshop, those are the frameworks that we're delivering. The, the big work of reading in terms of like the meaning parts and the comprehension in reading and writing workshop. And then also the opportunity to develop knowledge through content literacy. Over on the right. Are some of the programs that we have widely available right now for our teachers to, to use. And to draw from. Some of them have been in place for a while, some of them are newer. They've definitely, it's, and Kate would know more than I do, but from what I've heard, these are definitely. Resources that have had teams of teachers have input on choices. How to use them, what grades to use them in. And it's always a time of, in education, we're always looking to evaluate, are these the right? Resources, are we using them in the ways that are meeting the needs of the students? And hopefully the data that we're using this year will help us to determine that. So you can see that we have. An array of resources that we are using to deliver instruction within those components of literacy. There are some places that we do have some holes that we, we do want to kind of come back and address. Like you can see here, the project read in second grade, it's kind of a standalone now as for phonics. We know that we need phonics instruction. That's going to need to be a decision, a shorter term decision that, that the grade two team's going to need to make as far as what phonics instruction makes the most sense. And then thinking about in grades three to five, then what does third grade students that might need some additional phonics? What will they have as programming? And then what will word study look like further into four and five? And all of this is kind of for this box in the middle, right? The why, why do we, why do we? Need these resources and why do we teach these components? And it's to build knowledge, automaticity and fluency at the sound letter and word. And sentence level so that. so that, you know, half of the job of reading, at least half, is figuring out the words and reading them in a way that becomes more and more automatic so that we can provide more and more opportunity and time and space in our heads to comprehend text at the word, sentence, passage, text, and across text levels through frequent opportunity to read complex and independent texts. I just wanted to kind of circle back to the workshop structure and routines. In Lunenburg, we do use a workshop structure. And the beliefs behind the workshop structure and routines is that it's designed to explicitly teach student strategies. And that is an important part, to have those strategies explicitly taught. We can't assume the kids are just getting it by kind of watching us, but it needs to be direct instruction. Given the opportunity to apply those strategies, not only that day, but also think about how can you apply those strategies flexibly whenever you need them. The workshop structure and routines provide opportunities for small group work and conferring and multiple opportunities for personalizing instruction. And I think that's something you, I hope you've heard throughout us talking about Title I, you know, thinking about how Title I also is complementary in providing that small group support, but also providing those personalized learning platforms that give additional personalized instruction. So that's happening in our Tier One. That's also happening in our Tier Two. This year, probably more than any, being part of a learning community and establishing relationships, seeing yourself in the books that you read, feeling part of the community, providing a safe space for kids to explore the themes, the characters, the actions that they may come across in their lives. Workshop structure provides those opportunities as well for students to work in small groups and partnerships, to work intensely with the teacher, to have conversations about themselves as readers, about themselves as thinkers, to set goals, to get feedback. Other important part of a workshop structure is to build in choice and student voice so that they develop a sense of agency. Of course, there's teaching into that, right? It's not just a free-for-all, but instead, like, you know, how do you make thoughtful choices? How do you, in Writer's Workshop, develop an argument and voice your opinion that has evidence so that, you know, you really are able to express your wants and your needs? And let's see, the last part here about like why workshop structure, it's really also to take the role of the teacher, which at some points is direct instruction and is the person modeling and giving you these, like really key things that you need to know. But then the teacher then moves into the role of coach, and students are able to kind of carry on and immerse themselves in the work. And just like a workshop that might exist in woodworking, you know, kids are actually doing the work and getting coaching from the side. It's not talking only, being talked at or practicing one discrete skill, but instead, like really going in, having some authentic opportunities to apply and then having a coach beside you to provide some feedback so that you keep getting better and better at reading and writing and more and more independent. So this quote came from Edweek, actually quite recently, 2019. And it really talks about the importance of the teacher. Yep, programs are important, and it is important for teachers to have resources, absolutely. But more importantly is the teacher and the training the teachers need in order to evaluate practices themselves so that they can, too, have a sense of agency and feel empowered, not just feel empowered, but be empowered to make decisions based on the data, based on the research, to use parts of programs to meet the needs of their students, maybe to use programs in the whole, but in general, to have this sense of agency to make decisions based on research, based on data, based on what they know about the students in front of them. There have been some considerations that have been emerging recently around one resource that we do use in Lunenburg that we are going to make some revisions towards. And these considerations are actually quoted from Lucy Cockens just recently, which is a reaffirmation, at least on how I see it. I've always had a phonics block with a phonics program that had systematic phonics instruction for all kids. And that is something that I know in my own practice has been important. It continues to be important. Reading workshop and the reading units of study are great resources for developing students' reading habits, their love of literature, their comprehension, and understanding of the big ideas in reading. But there are a couple of things that are in the Cockens units in grades one and two, a few of their lessons that we are going to make some revisions towards so that they are leaning much more on basic foundational phonics skills as a primary go-to for decoding a word or figuring out a tricky word. Grade one has already talked about that. I will be talking with grade two in the next couple of weeks. And kindergarten talked about that yesterday during their PD day. So we will make those adjustments. And those adjustments, as many of us have been around as long as I have, they do come, and it's good to know new things and to make those adjustments to meet the needs of our kids. Let's stick here. So right about here at the end, just to sum up what we are going to be focusing on in terms of literacy curriculum. And I just want to say this also in the reality of a lot of new. So I'm really appreciative to the hard work of teachers and their willingness to engage in this work along with figuring out how to deliver instruction in a hybrid model. So already accomplished, the teachers have identified the standards from spring 2020 that need to be revisited. We just learned the other day that iReady also helps with some programming to revisit those standards, which is great. We already have, you know, when I came in, I wanted to know, like, what are you teaching? And how's it going? And I can't believe how quickly, how quickly, and with Annika Scott's support as well and the work of the teachers, definitely. We have a schedule of standards, which is amazing. Like, they just came together, all in one place. They all kind of look the same as far as the formatting. Yeah, there's some more things that we need to do. We need to, it's going to be an always-evolving map, but it's already pretty much together, which is amazing. And we also, further down, already have the beginnings of an assessment schedule. Certainly a robust schedule, definitely for this year. And we'll, of course, make some more tweaks to that as teachers see that there might be some gaps and things we need to put in place. But those have come together just beautifully. We're going to continue to deepen the understanding of early literacy development and effective practices, especially around foundational reading. And that's going to come through some work with the department that we'll bring back. Using technology to pinpoint and plan for instruction. You've heard me talk a lot about the instructional technology platforms that we're using, using apps, sorry, apps to amplify teaching of key literacy skills, knowledge and strategies. There are so many apps out there, and some of the teachers are amazing. They can do so many different, myself, you know, I have a few, try to use them really well for certain parts of teaching. And it's great that we have that wide breadth of talent. But definitely to make sure that folks are at least able to do kind of at my level and have the support to use a set of applications to really amplify important parts of their teaching so that students are engaged, right? That's a big piece, is how do we make sure that our students are engaged in foundational and content literacy? And finally, we're hoping, this is a little bit more of an aspirational, but I think it will come along the way to curate examples of student writing at each grade level to demonstrate the rigor so that serves as examples of these schedules of standards and can help us also calibrate our assessments. Here's what, especially if we have internal assessments, this is what they say. When we look at the outcome of student writing, does it match? Does the assessment results match the rigor that we're expecting? So I think it's definitely an aspirational focus for the year. I think everybody is on board and working incredibly hard. And I have to applaud the adaptability, flexibility, patience, and determination of the teachers. And I'm really very fortunate to be working alongside Annika and the building principals through all of this. All right. That was a lot. Remember literacy. The words just keep coming.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'll turn it to, if you're open, if there are questions. Ms. Archambau?
Hi. I don't really have any questions. I just want to applaud you on the very complete work you have done in a very short amount of time, dealing with not only all aspects of Title I, but all aspects of emergent literacy and literacy into the elementary, upper elementary school levels. It's extremely impressive and very nice to see the data-driven, careful look at literacy. So thank you very much.
Anyone else? And I would echo that in the turbulent times that we're dealing with. This is, this was such, you know, so expansive and with the restrictions that we're dealing with in so many ways and just, you know, the rigor that educators are facing to be able to have done all of this and then on your end to interpret all of that data and put it together and still have a clear vision, you know, where next steps are, is impressive. Mr. Leighton? You are muted, Mr. Leighton.
Thank you. So I would agree. I think it was so important to get the testing done so that we can identify the students that had those, the needs for these resources. I think it's frustrating to see the Title I funding decreasing. But as you said, it sounded like it was federal funding decreasing. So if we could just keep an eye on that and hopefully, we can get some more federal funding, but also that we're prepared as the, if the numbers do go down, that we still have the resources that we need and prepared. I liked how you were getting the teachers involved with the resources and that they're really picking the resources that best fit their needs. That was great. I did have some concerns over, I guess, my thought. Initially, I think it's great that we're having resources at the primary school that we identify it early so that it's not an issue later on. But I was surprised that the data, the red and the yellow was increasing as it went to Turkey Hill. I didn't know if that was a data trend, if the red and the yellow were increasing over years progressively, if there was a certain grade level. I just want to make sure that we're paying attention to those numbers and that we can identify what we need to address to try to decrease the numbers as the kids go up the grades.
Can I respond?
Yeah, please.
And Mr. Leighton, I appreciate that piece. I think using iReady as a platform and sticking with it will give us those kinds of historical data. I suspect this year, we're also seeing some effect of the disruption. And I think our, I've been very mindful about getting supports to third and fourth grade. Last year just didn't work out with staffing and the pause in the school year is my understanding. So I think that's carried forward. So this year, it was really a big emphasis on like, let's see how much support we can provide, you know, in engaging ways to, to your point, make sure that that doesn't become a trend.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any other questions, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rebecca.
Then we will move on to our next discussion topic, which is our COVID-19 metrics and protocols.
So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Katie McGuire.
I'm not seeing the ability to share.
Try it again.
There we go. Okay. Brief overview tonight of a little bit of the activities regarding COVID here in the district and some of the metrics and protocols and also the recent orders from the governor. So these are our five Ws for the Lunenburg Public Schools. Wear a mask, wash your hands, watch your distance when you are sick, stay home, and when the Board of Health calls to answer the phone. Our quick ways for everybody to remember those things to help keep us safe in school. So the school community, the teachers and the kids have done a tremendous job with the first three. Great mask compliance. They're doing a great job with hand hygiene, keeping a distance. Parents, we are so thankful. The parents have been such great partners, keeping the kids home when they're sick, doing that daily review of the students to make sure there were no symptoms, calling us, letting us know, and then following up with their primary care providers for assessments and then possible testing. So we are so thankful for that. The fifth W is when the Board of Health calls, answer the phone. With the increase of cases in our community, this is becoming even more important. So the, oops, sorry, everybody. So the Massachusetts Department of Public Health puts out a update every week and with the cases, total case count for the state. This past week, they also broke down where these clusters, where this spread is happening. The numbers for the, in households are quite high, and the confirmed case count is 6,830, as opposed to what's happening in the schools, very small number of clusters and also a low case count and also a pretty small number of close contacts within the schools. So just a quick reminder, oh, I'm sorry, everybody. This isn't my forte. I apologize. Quick reminder, with a close contact is someone who is within six feet of an infected person for a total of 15 minutes. And then you also look back to do contact tracing two days before the person was ill or two days before, when you finally had the positive test result. So how contact tracing works here in the school, that if we're informed of a member of our community testing positive for COVID-19, we immediately collaborate within the Shover Board of Health to do that contact tracing. Our goal is to quickly identify any close contacts, advise them to quarantine. We let them know that the Shover Board of Health will be calling and following up with them or if not the Shover Board of Health, the Contact Tracing Collaborative. And so we ask them to please be, you know, watching for that phone call and that, along with the Board of Health and the Contract Tracing Collaborative and their primary care provider will help guide them and give them information about compliance. and give them information about compliance with that length of quarantine and monitoring for symptoms and when they should possibly refer for testing. Just for a little bit about the DESI reporting requirement. If we have a positive case within our school community, we are required to call the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and let them know that a student or staff member has tested positive for COVID-19, do a call into the Rapid Response Hotline. And they are doing this tracking strictly of the case numbers. They're not responsible for any of the public health aspect of this. And then this information also is confidential. I just call in the information, the basic information. Some of the guidelines that DESI has for suspension of in-person learning, if there's a need for the extensive cleaning of the building, if we're showing a widespread transmission, either through having a mobile testing unit come out or from some other test results within the community, if there are widespread absences among the students and staff due to illness, and then also if the school district is in the red on the DPH health metrics for the past three weeks and risk of transmission is increased. And then this is done through the school department and with the local Board of Health. They would also help us with, to make this decision. And here is our map, our COVID map for the state. I'm sure you're all familiar. And here we are, right here in Lunenburg, in the yellow for the, for two weeks now. So just a brief update, the governor issued a few orders this past week. They go into effect this Friday. One of them is around gathering at private residences. The limit of 10 people at a public, excuse me, a private residence. And then for indoor gatherings and then outdoor gatherings at private residence, it must be limited to 25. Also revise the face covering order that on these face coverings, very important, worn when carpooling with non-household members. The exclusion for social distancing has been removed and that would say, in the, with the school requirements for, you know, we can still have our guidelines here for school. That does not change what we do at the school, but this is more to the outside in the community. And then also the stay-at-home advisory that the governor just issued. So from 10:00 PM to 5:00 AM, just limiting the amount of travel outside of your household. And I have one more slide, and I apologize, I put this together kind of hastily. And I think this is a lot of what's kind of driving what's going on with some of these new orders from the governor. So the last two weeks, these are the cases that we've had the increase. And if you look, that zero to 19, 20 to 29, 30 to 39 age group is really driving a lot of transmission within the community. And I think that was probably, I'm guessing, the reason that the governor chose to, you know, to put out these orders to try to limit what was going on in the community, keep people, you know, people home as much as possible. All right, I'm going to try to get out of this, stop, share. There we go. I apologize, it's not, Zoom's not my thing.
Nicely done.
Yes.
So do you have any questions for me? I just, I didn't want to overwhelm you with all kinds of stats, but just give you kind of, you know, what's, what's the, what's going on right now in the state and kind of what we're looking at in the community?
Ms. Shapiro?
First off, thank you for that presentation. That was amazing and like, just amazing, all the information that we needed. But I had a question about Thanksgiving. Like, I know we talked a little bit earlier about like Halloween and how we're expecting rising cases because of that. And I'm worried that over Thanksgiving break, students are going to expand their bubbles and be in extremely close quarters with probably family members that they hadn't previously been spending time with and people are going to be traveling. And I'm concerned that this is going to result in a higher likelihood of exposure and so like a potential for a larger spike. And I'm wondering if we were considering taking precautionary action for this?
So it's a really great question. And I actually posed this dilemma to the district level leadership team a month ago. We had some conversation around preemptively requesting the school committee to consider two weeks' worth of remote teaching following Thanksgiving, figuring that that would provide the quarantine period should any of our families or staff travel to areas outside of the state for the holiday. There are challenges even with, with making that decision. Might some of our families consider that if two weeks of remote learning follow Thanksgiving, they could spend longer somewhere else before coming back, thus defeating the two-week quarantine period? So we did have a lot of conversation around it. And interestingly, it was just a handful of days after I had this conversation with the leadership team here in Lunenburg that, you know, that, that consideration was being discussed through the Superintendent listserv. And the commissioner learned of it and issued a memo that we were to follow the guidance and we were not to transition to a remote learning model until our community had been red for three consecutive weeks. And even then, we're being urged to stay open as long as there isn't transmission happening in the schools. So the notion that we would be able to, you know, schedule two weeks of remote after Thanksgiving and then after the December break and February and April, that, that really isn't an option, not for us, not for any district, under the state guidelines.
Thank you.
Ms. Kelly? Dr. Brenner, I was hoping you could expand just on the process of a student having to suddenly go into quarantine and what their remote learning situation would look like.
So right now, we're working on a case-by-case basis to set up the remote learning at different grade levels with the conditions that we have currently. One of the things that we've been talking about with the teachers is this, the capacity to livestream would actually address the quarantine student challenge that will be before us. We do have a number of students currently under quarantine. And just with the nature of the safeguards, anytime, you know, somebody's identified as a close contact, they're going to quarantine if they've, if they're living in a household where somebody's being quarantined, they might be quarantined. And if there's somebody in the household that's tested positive, they might be quarantined. There will be more, more cases where students are quarantining. So district-wide, we're seeing that the capacity to livestream would address that concern regardless of the grade level. But, but basically, a case-by-case basis, we're looking at the grade level, the school building, what our capacity is to support the student who's going to be out for an extended period of time. But we are hoping to get to a place where that's uniformed district-wide with the capacity to livestream a student in for the duration of their quarantine. And Katie McGuire can speak to this as well. There are some circumstances under which a student may be quarantined for up to 24 days. So I'll let Katie speak to that.
So if there's a positive case in the household, the index case would need to isolate for 10 days. Then that case, that person needs to be, complete their 10 days of isolation, be symptom-free. And then the clock starts ticking for any household members. So you have to then quarantine for 14 more days to not be contagious. So it could be upwards of 24 days. And if you actually have the illness rolling through a household, this could extend this even longer.
And I think that there's one more thing that I just want to provide some, some clarification around. We are required to report if any staff or students test positive, regardless of the circumstances around it. We may have someone test positive and not have been on the campus for a number of days. And there's absolutely no chance then that they've potentially exposed others to the virus. But because they are either a student in Lunenburg or a staff member in Lunenburg, we are required to report it. So we will be putting out letters because all of this data goes to state. Everybody can, can access the data. We want to be fully transparent, so we do send out communication if there is a positive case. You know, we, we can't provide too much detail because we do have an obligation to protect the confidentiality of the individual or individuals that are affected. But, but we will provide whatever information is necessary to those individuals that have to have that information. We just won't be providing a lot of detail to the entire school community around each case. Each case is going to be unique, the circumstances, the timing. Case by case by case, it is going to be unique. And, you know, we did have some questions that came to me, several that went to Katie as well. Parents concerned that they needed more information. But by and large, the school community was very patient and accepted the information that was provided. And, you know, I think that speaks to a level of trust, or at least I hope that it speaks to a level of trust that, that if there is information that is vital for you to have for the safety and well-being of your students or staff members, the people who, who need to have access to that information will, will be provided, that information. Katie, I don't know if you want to speak to anything beyond that?
No.
Any other questions from the committee? All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. That was, that was very informative. And I think it's important for the community to understand, you know, how decisions are being made, what drives them and where we're at currently. So, and even the forward thought is, as Ms. Shapiro brought up about regarding as we come into holidays. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie.
Yes, thank you, Katie. All right, we will move on to approval of paraprofessional MOA. And I will turn that back over.
And I'll invite Mr. Cassidy.
Good evening, everyone. This is Mike Cassidy, I'm the business manager. And before the school committee tonight is the approval of an MOA with the Paraprofessional Union for the Lunenburg Public Schools. This, what you have in front of you is a one-year contract. As you, as you know, we had been prepared to meet with them and we started meeting with them right around the closure period in March. We had had some contract language that we, we agreed to. So, and that language is in front of you tonight. Just a couple cleanup pieces to the general contract, redefining service fee language. You know, just tightening up the, the language around grievances and uses of sick leave, bereavement leave. And but the, the impact of this MOA to the budget is approximately $5,095. So there are really two pieces of the, the contract, excuse me, of the MOA that is going to impact the value of that. So I want you to understand that the, the MOA that's presented to you is a zero increase for the paraprofessionals. For, it's a one-year contract, so a zero increase. However, we are making an adjustment in one of the columns to bring two paraprofessionals above the minimum wage and bringing them into a step that, that will keep them higher than the minimum wage through the school year. And that's a cost of $2,295. In addition, we are, this MOA is addressing 14 paraprofessionals who did not get any increase from last year to this year, meaning they, they had, they're basically on the max step of the contract. And what is being proposed in this MOA is a $200 one-time payment to those 14 paraprofessionals. Once again, $200 and the value of that is $2,800. So just a reminder that, so that is not increasing their hourly pay. We're back to the drawing board sometime in late winter and early spring with this bargaining group. So that is essentially it. It's, it's a modest payment for the group with some minor language changes that essentially benefits both parties so that we were able to work out some of those, those easy language changes. So the, the next step for the committee is to approve this agreement. However, before you do that, if you have any questions, I am here to answer those.
Any questions? I don't see any, I don't have any myself. It was very straightforward, you do care, Ms. Ashambo?
I just wanted to confirm that the funds to fund this are coming from the Salary Reserve Fund? Or where are they coming from?
The, the money that is going to be paying the, the $200, well, the, essentially, the $5,000 is coming out of the Salary Reserve Fund. And there is money left in that account at this time.
Thank you.
Any additional questions for Mr. Cassidy? If not, I will take a motion. Ms. Shapiro?
This is Sophie Shapiro, and I move to approve the paraprofessional MOA as presented.
Is there a second? Ms. Ashambo? You're muted.
Try again. This is Carol Ashambo, I will second that.
Ready for a roll call?
Okay, Ms. Shapiro?
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
I abstain.
So noted. Ms. Ashambo?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bertrand?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. And I'll actually, Mr. Cassidy, if you want to stay with us, permission to post is the next item on our agenda.
So we're actually going to pass, pass over this agenda item. As I addressed in the superintendent report, we'll be looking to fill any of the vacant paraprofessional positions that are already in the budget. Mr. Cassidy, do you have anything to add?
No, I I think, you know, it's our practice to evaluate every single open position that that comes our way due to resignation or retirement. I think it's critical that we fill the open positions that we have. Once again, it's a it's our practice if if we are proposing any new full-time positions, we will bring those to the committee for approval with the proposed funding source. Okay.
Thank you. Donations is next on our agenda.
So the donation before you this evening to accept is from the Lunenburg PTO to the Turkey Hill Elementary School in the amount of $2,500. And this is the second half of the RFF award to the school from the 2019-2020 school year.
If anyone, any committee members want to put forward a motion to approve? Ms. Kelly?
This is Laura Kelly and I move to accept the donation from the PTO for Turkey Hill School.
Is there a second? Mr. Leighton?
This is Brian Leighton and I second the motion.
I think we are ready. We can
Ms. Shapiro?
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashambo?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bertrand?
Yes. Thank you, Lunenburg PTO.
Now we're on to old business with our FY22 capital plan.
And now I'd invite Mr. Londo to join the conversation.
Good evening, John Londo, Director of Facilities. We've started the the capital planning process and we I presented this plan once previous, like September. We are trying to prepare for when the schools' projects get presented to the town's capital planning committee. We have the 10-year plan that we proposed. The capital planning may tend to focus on just the first five years, but they will take input on larger dollar projects ending over 100,000 in the out years. We previously had presented three projects for FY22. And these are were projects that either were presented in FY21 and and to date have not been approved plus projects that were in the FY22 from last year. So the the first one that that we're recommend that I'm recommending is the installing air conditioning at Lunenburg Primary School. We're carrying that at 290,000. We did get funding in FY21 for design dollars, $10,000 to hire a designer. We have gone out for a for a designer quotes. We did get only one that that met the criteria we had. And that was the Giorgio Associates, who is currently working with the town on the Passios Elementary School redesign project. So that the 290,000 was an estimate. One of the tasks that the Giorgio will have will be to refine that number and get us guess closer to what the true cost will be. The components of that project are to install condensers for the energy recovery units that are on the roof of the primary school. And that will provide cooling for for almost all of the classrooms. The only classrooms not the only classroom not included would be the music room. But we are looking at adding a component in this project to take care of the music room. They have the music room and the cafeteria both have unit ventilators. So we're posing in this project to add cooling coils and condensers so that the cafeteria and the music room would be would have cooling as well. Once again, this is something that was in the original design of the building from 2003. So we do have some information about how big the units need to be, where they would be low, where these connections would be located. So the the 10,000 we have with designer will allow them to do that cost estimate to develop the project specifications and plans and then be able to assist with the bidding process and construction administration. And we're I'm recommending that as our our top priority for FY22. The second project for FY22 is the Turkey Hill Elementary School Admin Cooling. Once again, this was submitted on F in the FY21 plan. It was not approved in the annual town meeting. It will be considered on the special town meeting on November 17. So this is a project if it gets funded at that time, we'll come off the capital plan. If however, it didn't get approved, then then we come back with a priority two. It's my recommendation for FY22. The third project for FY22 is also a Turkey Hill Elementary School and is exterior envelope repairs. And what we're looking to try to do there are really two different things. One, there's some deterioration that's been going on with the concrete window sills in the gymnasium area. And we're that would be one of the repairs would be to replace those concrete cells that are deteriorating. And then the second part of the exterior envelope repairs would be to deal with the fascias on the front of the building. That would be the awning, the administration area, and then all of the faces inside the courtyard area. These are all the originals from 1969. It's a it's a piece of plywood that is covered by a membrane and the membranes are failing and they are exposing some of the plywood underneath. So we would be looking to put a covering. It would likely be a aluminum covering to wrap the plywood. It's something that we're not really can't get any other assist with. We to get some money from green communities to deal with insulation of the fascias, but that was on the inside. So that those are the the three components or the two components of that project. And we think that should be the the third priority. Once again, if the the second priority, you know, is funded here in November, then they'll be just those two items. And then beyond that, you know, the focus on this plan continues to be Turkey Health for to a great extent. In the in the nearer term, we do have some things that at the primary school, we have noteworthy in FY23 is trying to deal with the fire alarm system. The current fire alarm system is operational, but is is an obsolete system where we can no longer get repair parts for. That's not a problem until we, you know, if we have some major failure, then we will be really in trouble, but we proposed replacing the main fire alarm panel, all of the initiating devices and also the the notification devices. So and this project has some room to scale back. The initiating devices, the main panel are the really critical components. So conceivably, we could get away with holding on to notification apply notification devices, the horns and strobes and the panels that drive those. But at a minimum, we have to get, I think, new initiating devices, new smoke detectors, new pull stations and a new new panel. And once again, it's not that the current one has failed, but because there's no parts available, the detectors are now pushing towards 15 years old is a prudent thing to do since we can't can't get replacement detectors that match that panel. So that's probably the most noteworthy part of for the primary school. And then out in FY26, we're we're carrying 130,000 for gas condensing boilers. That will be something probably we would be looking at green community funds to help support that. Potentially also some MSBA funding. So there's a couple of routes for additional help with that project in the out years. And then later from like FY28 beyond, you start seeing a whole series of projects for Turkey Hill. Realistically, they are not projects that are likely to be done, but they reflect the needs that the building will have by FY29, the building will be 60 years old and will be in dire need of either renovation or replacement. And that's just something we have to plan for. So we're we're reflecting in FY29, 1.2 million for window repairs and FY30, 4.3 million for HVAC upgrade. In FY31, 3.9 million for electrical distribution. 2.6 million for sprinklers, sprinkler system and 241,000 for plumbing system. So this once again, these are projects that probably are not doable in in any school year. Collectively, it gives you the impression that, hey, look, we we really have a lot of things that need to be attended to on the school. And that would be, you know, an MSBA project. You know, that would would be following whatever happens to the the Passios to bring that building up to life safety code and to either extend the life or conceivably to replace it. So those are, that's what you see in the the long term for the district. There we have some district-wide projects that that span most of the the 10 years and it's a lot of vehicle replacements, things like mowers, dump trucks, pickup trucks, vans, just a number of, you know, smaller things, but not really that small, but things that need to be attended to over the course of the 10 years. So that's that's what we're we're recommending on the on the capital plan for FY22.
Questions from committee members? Mr. Leighton?
Thank you. John, you had mentioned the the fall town meeting. Is that something that you would be speaking at to give more details about what you gave us?
Typically, you know, because they've all been through the capital planning, you know, I'm usually in attendance, but usually I don't have to speak to these. It I think that, you know, it comes down to, you know, what the will of the voters are on continued capital spending in this year. And part of last year, of course, was, you know, there was some desire to be a little more conservative and that's what led to the splitting of the capital plan.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'll just add that we, John and I, have been asked to attend the capital planning committee meeting next week.
Thank you. That's actually Tuesday evening.
Correct.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Londo. Do you need? This is an action item, Dr. Burnham. Do we need to?
We would need to
Accept this?
The plan so that we can take it forward.
Take it to capital planning. Okay, so then I will take a motion to approve the FY 22 to 31 capital plan as presented. Ms. Arshambo?
This is Carol Ashambo and I wish to make a motion to approve the FY22 to 31 proposed school capital plan as presented this evening.
And is there a second? Ms. Shapiro?
This is Sophie Shapiro and I second that motion.
And a roll call vote?
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
Ms. Shapiro?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashambo?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bertrand?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, John.
Excellent. Moving on, public comment, open to anything that the school committee governs. Looking here. Mr. Leighton?
Yeah, I just wanted to share a nice story. Last night I got to meet two Lunenburg juniors. They were outside bearing the the cold, holding signs up that they they made themselves. And I thought that was a great way to get involved. They couldn't vote, but they could actually share their opinion and get out there. So I thought that was great. And I I would encourage everybody who not only didn't get to vote, but also got to vote, like get more involved. There's committees you can get involved in locally. You can get involved in campaigns locally or nationally. But there's a lot of opportunities and you can even run for positions too. So get involved, everyone. Thank you.
Can you see? And I don't see any other public comment. So we will continue on to reports. And Mr. Leighton, right there with you, we're starting with athletic and athletic advisory.
So we haven't met yet. We're scheduled to meet November 16.
Thank you. Finance Committee, Ms. Arshambo?
The Finance Committee met on the 29th of October. The first thing that was addressed is that John Henshaw has resigned from the committee. And I want to thank him for his very thoughtful, open-minded service to our community. He will be missed as part of the Finance Committee. There was a discussion of warrant articles. Most of the discussion was around the streetlights proposal and the significant savings that they may possibly add for our community. There was also the fire and clerical collective bargains have been reached. They each were one-year agreements. There there was some discussion, and I don't know if I really understand the whole thing, about health insurance restructuring for retirees that somehow some retirees were able to be folded into Medicare. And this will result in a when they there will be a decrease in the health insurance premiums by about 2%. Like if they say it's a 6% increase, it will only be like 4% because of it. That's what I got from that, but we should be watching that as next year's budget information comes out because according to that, there should be some form of mitigation in the fee. So I mentioned that. There was comments about our school committee liaison commented about the grant situation in the town, about the IT grant situation. And the town manager stated that CARES Act funds would cover the cost of what we needed as Dr. Burnham had talked about speaking to her about that. Their next meeting is November 12. And a reminder, the special town meeting is November 17.
Thank you. Policy Subcommittee? Policy Subcommittee.
We met on Monday, November 2nd, and we were able to review and make the necessary edits and changes to nine policies so far. We're still working on. We're hopeful to be able to bring some of these policies before the school committee on on November 18th for final reads. And we meet again next Monday, the 9th.
Well, thank you. PTO?
The PTO has not met since the last time that I gave a report, but they are meeting this Monday, the 9th.
School Councils, the primary school.
All right, and the primary school council met on Monday, October 26th. We discussed the continuous school improvement plan, and that was reviewed, and the process was reviewed, how how they used to develop it. And that was explained pretty detailed by Mr. Adams. We're able to make some changes, and we'll continue to work on it as a collaborative team. The Behavioral Health Support Team formalized a plan to support both the teachers and students. Members of the team have been identified, and the referral process has been created and shared with staff. We spoke about upcoming school events and how we could go about best communicating these with families, whether it's through Google Classroom or Google Calendar on the website. Teachers have been asked to submit their paperwork and needs, so the FY21 budget can be established. And the council is in need for another parent rep and community rep. So please contact the interim principal, Mr. Adams, if you are interested. And then the council is going to meet again on November 9th.
Thank you. Turkey Hill?
Will be meeting on Monday.
And Middle School?
Our next meeting is scheduled for the 30th of November.
And the high school?
On the high school, school council met yesterday, November 3rd. I was not able to attend the meeting because of an academic commitment of my own. But I'm currently in contact with Mr. McGrath about what was discussed at the meeting.
Thank you. And Capital Planning has not met since our last meeting. However, we we will be meeting on Tuesday night, and the schools and the schools are on the agenda. So those items that Mr. Londo outlined tonight will be presented. And Wellness Advisory?
The Wellness Advisory Committee has not met, and the coordinator is kind of a position that's in limbo right now because hasn't been replaced since Carolyn Finch retired. But I've been in contact with Sue Cavioli, and I'm going to do my best to figure out when they are meeting.
Thank you. Paccel?
I had not been contacted by them, or apparently I dropped the ball and didn't know who to contact because Mrs. Hyde indicated they were meeting tomorrow. I had heard nothing about that, so who would I contact so that I get on that list?
I will ask Juliana Hanscom to reach out to you.
Okay, because tomorrow I can't, but I certainly want to be involved in that. So that would be great. Thank you.
And TC Passios Building Design Committee?
Yes, we met on the second. It was the big part of the meeting was to approve the schematic design of the building, basically the layout, the adjacencies. Also, all the department heads had to sign off on the schematic design as well. So that was approved unanimously at the the meeting. Our next meeting is going to be also on Monday, where we're going to talk about how we're going to be presenting an updated article at the the town meeting. But we still have a lot more to do, but it's just an update article. There's still going to be a lot more details and numbers crunching and a lot more work to do, but it's some good progress that we got the schematic design approved.
And the Lifelong Learning Advisory has not met. And Topics for Future Discussion? Does anyone have a topic? For future? All right, then I will take a motion to adjourn. Mr. Leighton?
This is Brian Leighton, and I'll make a motion to adjourn at 9:12 PM.
And a second, Ms. Kelly?
This is Laura Kelly. I'll second that motion.
Roll call? Ms. Shapiro?
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashambo?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bertrand?
Yes.
Excellent.